Jerry is pulling up right now.
What?
Do you have your presentation?
I do.
Okay.
Sounds like Jerry's on his way in.
Alright, so we're ready to, we're just gonna keep things rolling. Jerry's on his way in, but let's get started because we do have a limited amount of time. This is just the continuation of our exploration of the brand and discovering a little bit about the town. And I think, you know, tonight, hopefully you had a chance to look at the memorandum that I put together. We're trying to nail down.
Yes.
Value proposition. And get a little closer on that. And it's really, hopefully tonight's pretty interactive because this is ours. This is not Krista's. And so we have to give her the feedback to really get this rolling and come up with what is Silt? What are we? So with that, Krista, I shall turn it over to you.
Okay. You can give this to Jerry.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thanks for having me. Okay, so tonight we have about four sections. And one of the main elements that we're looking for is we're looking to arrive at a list of agreed upon town attributes. And the attributes are going to help us develop the brand. You know, the other major focus tonight is to try to come up with a value proposition that we can coalesce around. And I will say that this is going to be a bit of an either or. If it's more natural to come up with a list of attributes, that will inform the brand. But if you feel like you have a value proposition, Jim did a ton of homework and putting together value proposition examples from other communities. Thank you, Jim. Then we'll talk about, we'll talk about that too. But that's an either or. We're then, we're then gonna go and we're gonna talk about what is the situation right now with the brand? And try to be as honest as we can about that because we're trying to get an authentic brand product out of this exercise. We're then gonna look at the objective for what do we want the brand to accomplish as a shortlist? So we're gonna spend about 15 minutes on each one. And I'm looking to get as much insight from you as possible because it's not my brand. It's my job to elucidate your vision for your community. So.
Do you want me to put words on the board at all, or are we just gonna?
I don't think so. If everybody just wants to make notes, that's why I gave you everybody a handout so you can make your own notes if you would like to. Do you wanna do that? If it feels like you wanna do that, grab a marker and jump up there.
I was asking whether you wanted me to.
Okay. Do you want me to do a 15 minute timer to keep you guys?
Only if we get the Hunger Games music.
Yeah. Now, can we have something doom sounding at the end?
I am looking straight at the clock, so I think I'm okay, but thank you. Yeah, I, okay, thanks. Okay. Alright, so when we think about town attributes, what I did was, I came in last week and I grabbed all of the posters that we had hanging around the room from our previous three conversations. And then what I did was I sat down and I started thinking about the, sort of the net result of all of our conversations. And without, you know, reading from the posters, I really just did sort of a brain dump of everything that has come up. And what was top of mind for me? And I wanted to gut check this with you. I then went back and I did look through the posters to make sure that we captured what everybody cares about. But, you know, it's not rocket scientist. It's just communicating, what do you say about yourselves as a town? What would you say to a friend who wanted to know about where you live? What would you say to someone who might want to move here? So I'll go through the attribute examples, but I want to listen to your conversation if you just want to jump in at any point. So you're clearly a small town. And I think that's very ownable, the fact that you are a small town. Because you're authentically a small town. Right?
I'll, I'll jump in.
Sure.
And I'll speak to what I see as a challenge and what I see as an attribute.
Sure.
What I see what has developed from what downtown Silt was and where we are heading.
Please.
Used to be a very small, just, you know, more rural town with a few households. And now we have a bit of that downtown feel. And I was actually down in the brew zone last weekend. Lots of people, music, live music playing, children playing around. So it's also becoming that place where you don't just come to sleep anymore. You actually get out to listen to live music and have fun. So we are in that very transitional point to where our concert events now are attracting over 800 people. And we've mixed with the vendors as well. So we are in the process of, you know, switching from that bedroom town mentality to a town that more and more to town events. We, we are here to build a community, to have more of a community feel. I see efforts from like local churches that are doing local groups.
Sure.
You know, support and meeting types of groups. And all of this is happening here. And people are not necessarily wanting to go too, too far to reach those things. They are wanting to be here near their neighborhood, get to know their neighbors. And, and I feel that that's the direction we are heading, especially talking about, you know, pedestrian bridge and the Plaza project coming downtown and potentially reviving, which we have the URA. And then talking about the older buildings and all of these great things. So it is good to be talking about branding, but branding for me into something that would incorporate all those amazing attributes that Silt does have.
Sure. So it sounds to me like, you know, one of the attributes is it's a small town and there's an authentic town experience. It's a real town, meaning you don't have, so for instance, for somebody who lives outside of Denver in a community like, you know, maybe Evergreen, you don't have to go down to Denver. You can, you can stay home in Evergreen and have a great time. Silt is very much like that, according to what you're saying. So that sounds good.
The word authentic.
Authentic, okay, yeah.
We like to have that sense of authenticity with the diversity that we have with Silt.
Okay, okay, very good. So under small town, what I, what I had written was that there is an authentic town experience. I always like to say people instead of just families because not everybody has a family. And obviously it all comes down to people, but people's families and visitors alike. I mentioned community pride. There's a real community lifestyle, which you just spoke to. So I'm glad that, you know, that, that came through in the previous sessions. There are events, there's outdoor recreation that you can stay in town for. And then there's also outdoor activities or you can play outdoors. The rural roots are embraced and maintained. So we talked a little bit about the notion of being rural by design or keeping it rural. I think that a sufficient statement is that the rural roots are embraced and maintained. An attribute is that it's a bedroom community in which to live and play, not just a place to sleep. It's not necessarily a place to work. It's really a livable place. I think that we talked about the fact that people commute to different areas from here. And so it's just a very livable place. That's kind of what bedroom community means to me.
I was thinking of like a comfortable place to live, which I don't know if that
No.
Is that exciting of an adjective? But it is, I feel like it's accurate.
I, you know what? I actually almost wrote down gracious home or comfortable home in terms of, there's a furniture store that I know of called the Comfortable Home. And when I think of that, I think of Silt, quite honestly. So I, I had that on my mind too. I think that's great.
And where it's like a large section of the valley is workforce, you know, like it's like a work, we're a workforce. And sometimes people identify with that, you know what I mean? Like they're the working force of the.
Does bedroom community maybe capture that?
Yeah.
I, well, something to think about, something to think about. But I also noted that from your notes that it's safe and welcoming. I think that being safe and being welcoming actually go together quite a bit. It's charming, it's walkable. And there's a rural town lifestyle as well. And I want to tell you a quick story. I was actually hiking this morning and I mentioned Silt to somebody on a hike in Grand Junction. I said, oh, I, I'm excited because I'm gonna go to Silt today. And the person jumped in and said, oh, I did some work around there. What a charming town.
Charming town.
Hot off the presses, hot off the trail. It was a very nice thing to hear. So there we are in attributes. You want to talk about anything else before we move on?
Have you heard our, we had a previous slogan kind of, which was Silt happens?
Okay.
No, that was never adopted by the town. Yeah, I know. Exactly, yeah.
Like people say now, Silt's happening instead, right? You know, like the new form of that is like Silt's happening.
Silt's happening, okay.
Silt is happening. So those are things that have been like informally tossed around that I've heard.
Let me.
Figured I should just cue you in on, but.
Let me clue you, okay, let me mention something back. There's a town that I will not name who's Do you know who I'm talking about? WTF?
Welcome to Fruta.
Yeah.
Had our, we just went to the CML.
Welcome to Fruta.
There and he did, that's how he introduced himself.
How many people use that?
Welcome to Fruta. Let me just like, so I'm gonna pretend like we're on Madison Avenue in an advertising agency and get real disciplined about branding for a second because that's my job. So it's never a good idea. It's, it's okay to have an underground colloquial brand. Using profanity like that or using something, you know, that's real maybe crass is good to keep disassociated from your regular brand. So if something were to be like a Silt happens, that would be kind of an underground, maybe for an event, something, you know, kind of cool that came up from a grassroots. And so keeping it very much in that domain, but not in the domain of the town brand. Does this make sense to anybody?
It makes tons of sense. Yeah, it's like, it's like letters AF or overused too.
And I would love to see Fruta get a, you know, lean on their core brand, whatever that brand is. But yes, people affectionately think of it as WTF and I do too. I mean, fruit is a great place. Okay, so those are the attributes. Let's move on to the value proposition. Okay, so here, we're not trying to put together a tagline. What I'm trying to hear is what does Silt have to say for itself? And these are, these are just examples as thought starters. But I think that what I've heard us saying is that Silt is uniquely our hometown. We keep it rural, livable and charming. And livable, you know, I mean, that, that's not a word that we have to gravitate to. But for the purpose of this conversation, it means it's safe. It means that you can raise your family here. It means that you can enjoy the events. It means that you can go out and grab dinner. It means you don't have to go out of town for everything.
But I don't like it livable, it almost lives like you are tolerating, it's just livable. It's, I don't like the negative interpretation of just living in a livable place. You just almost have to put up with, you know, and we have great resources here in Silt. Great parks, great, you know, resources. And it's better than livable, I think. I think a more elevated word.
Simple. A good word to me.
Well, and so go ahead, I mean, Silt offers a rural quiet, rural quiet and a real neighborly, small town. These are things that might be good to say about a community like Silt. So do we want to?
Place to live, work and play.
Again, this is not the branding at all. This is the idea that you want to convey about yourself. Jim, do you want to read any of those from other towns that you?
So, I mean, Salida. Combining mountain town charm with a vibrant arts community, Salida offers an active lifestyle, affordable living and access to world-class outdoor recreation year round.
I would caution against the word affordable anywhere in Colorado right now, to be quite honest.
Too many people use it.
Everybody uses it, yeah. And I think that when you put together a value proposition, it's a good idea to really differentiate.
And Rifle is an affordable, close-knit community positioned near public lands, offering outdoor access, a growing economy and small-town values along Colorado's western slope.
So, yeah, you don't like the word.
Hidden at the center of the Aspen and Roaring Fork valleys. Silt offers a wide variety of.
I like that.
See now, but we're sounding wordy. Say it like you're saying it, like to me, like, hey Krista, you know, we live in Silt, this is what it's, you know what I mean? Just to take the pressure off of you. I mean, those could be good ideas, but to take the pressure off.
Yeah, Decorah, Iowa. Decorah is home to a small liberal arts college. And it's this progressive small town is known for its sustainability, leadership, strong no-region heritage and support for local businesses with a thriving art scene and renowned liberal arts college.
Well, and we do have those things too. I mean, we have a college campus five minutes, 10 minutes away, right here. We have a vibrant art scene all around us.
I mean, I agree, but it's not in our town, so I don't count that.
But it's like we have access to those things. So I don't know. I mean, that's part of my experience.
You know, there was a town in Colorado that I used to love what they said about themselves. I won't mention the town. This was their slogan a very long time ago. But what they said was, we're a real town, friends welcome. I absolutely loved that.
Bet you.
We're a real town. Just so if you could want to riff on that and think about, one of the things that occurred to me was Silt offers rural quiet. Quiet is at a premium on planet Earth. You know, not a lot of people live in a quiet place anymore. If you think about towns like, you know, I can pick on Idaho Springs. Everybody in Idaho Springs, everybody in Vail knows that they hear the roar of 70 all the time. I've asked and I think that you informed me that you don't hear that here. You, you don't just hear the highway all the time, or do you?
Not, I.
Not incessantly?
Hear the train, not incessantly.
The train, the train's charming. I hear the trains, it's very charming.
Simple pleasures? I don't know.
No. That could go south real fast.
I think this goes too far, but it's the western slopes hometown.
That's not a bad idea at all. I like the idea of hometown.
When you.
You like claiming that?
When you think about everything that we talked about. It's family-friendly, you got outdoor recreation, you've got community orientation, you've got all our
Accessibility.
Yes, I mean, we've got everything you need here, but it's a hometown.
What do you think about too? It's also the home of people that work all over the western slope and people that travel all over the western slope, but they come home and live in Silt.
Yep.
So it's really a hometown.
And that's kind of, that's where the hometown thing was kind of.
Okay. Now we're cooking with gas. That's one of the things that I wondered about. So the very first thing, you know, that I threw out here, Silt is uniquely our hometown. We keep it rural and charming. So I threw the word hometown in here for a reason. I wanted to see how you felt about it.
I like it.
You like the word hometown. I think it makes sense with bedroom community. And Andrea, I really liked what you said about livable. You're right, because that could sound like tolerated.
And that's the thing with, it's like we're beyond just a bedroom community. Because the bedroom community, we're just coming home and sleeping here. It's become now where you can do all the things, being in the home instead of just the bedroom.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I don't like.
The living community. Beyond that, but that's kind of.
It makes it sound like there's nothing else available other than bedroom.
Part of the reason why I like western slope is you're playing to the region.
It encompasses everything.
It encompasses the region in which it is and where people, because people work in the region. And all of Colorado knows where the western slope is.
And people.
Have a hard time defining it, but they all know where it is.
Yeah. And I think it plays into our vintage, our location to have accessibility. Like my son goes to college in Rifle. My daughter goes to school in Colridge. Having been that, there's the airport in Rifle as well. So being that town that so provides the.
Is it central? Does it feel central?
I feel, it feels very central to me. If you think of Aspen, Grand Junction, Denver, the accessibility time between those places.
Me too.
If you think world and then you think Colorado and then you think about those big centers from that perspective, I think we are very centered, very much so.
What about to ski, what about to skiing? Do you guys have a lot?
Sunlight.
You're, okay.
Forty-five minutes, forty-five minutes.
It's not that far to butter. That's one of the, one of the things I tell people, especially in the winter time.
From a snow mess.
Is that in the winter time, so the climate's mild and nice almost all the time. Like we, we get to go play in the snow, but we don't have to live in it. Because not living, I mean, not to an extent like you would do in Vail or in those places where you're shoveling constantly or else. I mean, we typically through the winter, you don't get like more than a foot or two of snow at the time. I mean, it's very rare that we get big amounts. And so it's kind of where you're able to stay here, you can live here, but you can go play nearby without having to, and then you come home.
Jerry, you were shaking your head.
It's that nervous twitch.
No. I mean, I, I hear a lot of this stuff, but you know, Newcastle's got the exact same thing as we do. So I mean, they're pretty much, we're exact same place as Newcastle.
Lots of brands.
They have access to Glenwood, they have access to Junction. Authentic Colorado, that's their.
Yeah, authentically Colorado.
I think so.
Or authentic.
We are similar to Newcastle in a way because I mean, there's very similar situations. It's very similar.
I, you know, I.
Aspen skiing, that's saying a lot.
Well, it on perfect roads, Aspen is 45, 50 minutes away. On a ski morning, it's an hour and a half to two hours.
Well, that's the.
And it is.
A basin to be.
And it is on the vast majority of days, you're 60 minutes from Vail.
Highway to, exit to exit.
That's pretty good.
And so that, that includes Beaver Creek. Then you've got, then you've got sunlight, which is in Glenwood, which is, that's only 30 minutes away. Outers is 30 minutes the other way.
Yeah.
Airport.
The sun.
At Grand Junction Airport in the Eagle International Airports. Not too far away. I find it very convenient having to drive 45 minutes to the airport in Grand Junction or the other way in Aspen.
That's why I was talking about the sign thing in this, like a sign statue in the center of town where it's like flat tops, Powderhorn Ski Area. Aspen, you know, because there's just so many different things, right? From where we're at.
Paris, London.
Yeah.
Paris, London.
Feeling like a wardrobe type thing.
There's one of those at the top of a ski.
I'm not saying that that's the idea or anything, but it's kind of interesting. I mean, it sounds like what I'm hearing from the conversation is it sounds like Silt is a lot more central to things than I thought about. And you're closer to the Front Range, you know, for those who want to go to the mountain.
Someone owns a razor, ask them if Silt is central. They're like, absolutely, because they can take that and go anywhere and spend dates.
Okay.
I like the western slopes. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, nope. And I, and I, I think you should say what you were gonna say. I totally agree.
I haven't said it yet.
I was.
Spit it out, smug. Are you psychic? Heart's ticking, come on. I like the western slopes hometown because I think it speaks to residents, it speaks to visitors, tourists. It also speaks to businesses who may be thinking about coming here. It speaks more generally to the town's proposed value today as well as 10, 20 years from today. I think it's, it's general enough to be applicable to multiple times as well as multiple groups within any of those times.
Yeah.
It's all encompassed.
Traffic on I-70, ain't that age well? We'll see.
How do you think that Silt would stack up as Colorado's hometown? If you were to, now I'm not saying that you want to say that, but I'm, I'm asking the question, how do you think that Silt truly stacks up? Because the time that I've spent here, I, I didn't know anything about Silt. I'm like impressed with Silt. I mean, I, I think Silt is quite a gem, to be honest with you.
Is that too diluted in terms of going up to the state level though? Are we diluting the value too much by saying the western slope? Where we're regionalizing it, again, thinking to residents, tourists, visitors, potential business development?
Oh, yeah. In Colorado, they might.
I don't want to.
Maybe, but I guess I'm asking just to ask the question, not to make the statement. But, because it's a good thing to know about yourself. I mean, does Silt arguably stand up as, just to know? And again, to your point, not saying to say that at the end of the day.
Well, I mean, let's, how long have you lived here, Chris?
Twenty-one years.
Jerry? Close to 40.
Eight.
In the area for about 20?
Oh, it's been probably 10 on and off in Silt.
Then 2015, February 13th.
Wow. Wow.
It's usually.
Was the humidity?
The humidity is probably zero. I would, I would say that it could stand up as Colorado's hometown, except that I almost feel like western slope is like a, a higher denotation because Colorado could mean like, like a flatland hometown, which isn't as exciting as like.
We're limited to, also if you, I mean, think if you were to ask, go any, to any town, like you go to Carbondale and there's the longtime locals that have been in Carbondale forever and ever and ever, that would argue that's the hometown.
And in any town, you're gonna have that.
But that's what I'm saying, so it doesn't matter where we go, we're gonna get that. But I think western slope, because like, I mean, I mean, yes, like Glenwood and stuff, but I don't even think, I think Glenwood, like western slope starts after Glenwood to an extent. Because it, I mean, it depends on who you're talking to.
Well, because, because everything east of the canyon.
Yes, first of all, Glenwood Canyon is kind of like the.
It's Eagle County, Vail. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what that is.
Yep.
Just like you go over to the east side of Vail Pass, that's Summit County.
Yep.
And so it's, you know, it kind of goes Summit, Eagle.
It's very differentiated.
Western slope.
Yeah. And because so many people that work in Glenwood and different areas live in this area, I mean, that's where that western slopes hometown kind of somewhat fit in, I think.
Okay. Can we coalesce around the word, what do you think about the word neighborly, at least in your attributes? Do you think that this area is truly neighborly?
Yes.
This goes with small town, this goes with having a vibrant downtown, this goes with claiming to be a hometown. Do people know each other's names here? I think that we had that conversation earlier and the answer was arguably, you know, you can say hello and know people's first name around here. Anybody want to talk about that?
I wouldn't say not necessarily, but we are building up to it.
Yeah, not necessarily, yeah. I mean, there's.
Maybe an overly friendly characterization, but like we're all very community-focused people.
Okay.
You know what?
Yeah, no.
I know what my neighbor across the street is doing, I would rather not.
Very southern, it's very southern to know that. And so.
For a while and they're very, like, you don't say hi, how are you? You just say hi and that's it. You know, it's like, I mean, which is.
A little more standoffish.
But people can be welcoming this area because like, an example is not, a couple of weekends ago, we're, every Sunday, there's horse, you turn it up with horse shoe pits. We have probably 16, anywhere from 10 to 20 people up there that are pitching shoes and everything. And a couple of weeks ago, this random guy showed up, nobody knew who he was. I didn't know where he came from, he just showed up there. And so he's hanging out, talking to everybody and he threw some shoes and, but he just welcomed into the group, welcomed in and allowed to participate. But that wasn't a, we don't know you, stay away. It was.
But you know, on the flip side.
Each other's privacy. I feel, I feel like that about Silt.
Silt welcomes you.
But I just wanted to throw out the point that my neighbors speak Spanish and they say that they don't know English. So to me, you know, we'll wave, but we, we can't communicate.
You should have come to class.
I know, I should have come to the class, but I'm just throwing that out as an example. So there might be some of that throughout town, you know, that could.
I think, I think one of our struggles in the community is there is, we, because of the 40% of the population is Hispanic heritage, we do have somewhat of a language barrier that, you know, we just did 12 weeks of Spanish class so that we could at least say hello to people and get to the, you know, get to the questions that they were asking and make sure that they get to the right person. And then ultimately be able to say, well, if we need to get an interpreter in here because it's a detailed conversation. That's, that's one of the things that we did. I mean, one thing I'll say is that as a stranger, walking around town, when I say hi to somebody as I'm walking, they say hi back. It's very Wisconsin-esque. I mean, when you're riding your bike. When you're, you know, when you're out and about in Wisconsin, you pass somebody on the sidewalk or on a bike trail, you say hello.
Rural Colorado, it's like you always wave, you know, when you drive past somebody, that's how I grew up.
You wave on the dirt roads is what I was always, you'd never pass anybody on a dirt road without waving.
Right.
In the block I live, the neighbors, every, I wouldn't say every year, but they do a block party in the summer. And invite everyone.
Yeah, okay.
And to your point, you have a diversity within the neighborhood. And a lot of times the participation, you know, it, it doesn't, unfortunately, everybody's invited. But, you know, we see a certain group of people coming in and participating. But it was nice to come into the neighborhood and be invited to the neighborhood barbecue But it was nice to come into the neighborhood and be invited to the neighborhood bar, barbecue that we all bring something like a potluck and we just sit for an afternoon and talk.
Okay.
I feel like neighborly is. Too subjective a term.
Okay.
I don't, I was divided.
Everybody said this is how I interpret it. Now expand that out to thousands, tens of thousands of people. They're carrying their own perception. Into that term and that makes it less valuable as a branding component.
I, I would agree. The moment that we started talking about it, I really, neighborly is a very southern concept. It's not necessarily, and then maybe a little more midwestern, but it, you know, this is the west, it is categorically a little bit different. And so everybody does bring a different idea of what neighborly means. Listen, there's a town in the south. That the sign in the town says, uh, come once and you're a visitor, come twice, you're family. And they pretty much mean that. And they'll invite you to come over and I moved to Florida and, uh, some people that my parents knew through a barbecue and it was for me moving down there. And you know, it was amazing. And, uh, it was just because they knew my family. And so because they knew my family, they felt like they knew me and it was sweet. But I think that's exactly right. So I don't mean to say things like, uh, it's welcoming. There's a strong sense of community, there's interaction. Uh, and we don't need to say the word neighborly, but I love the fact that we're coalescing around small town. So let's switch gears and let's. Okay. So did we get a value proposition statement? Uh, I think that it's Western slopes hometown.
I like that.
Main, okay.
Good.
Okay. Let's talk about the situation that we're in and here's why I.
A rifle has their hometown holiday.
Do you want to throw charming in there?
So can Pepsi both make such, but they have their own brand.
I'm just, I'm joking on that one. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So if we could, I'd like to hear what you think about the situation with the brand right now. Um, from what I understand, the brand is seen as a bit dated. Meaning a little bit outdated. To me, it's evocative of, and I don't mean this as a criticism because it's actually not a bad brand. It, it's balanced. I think that the black and white is strong. You know, you could have a real poorly designed, off kilter looking brand and, and I don't think that the silt current brand is that. However, it, it is a little reminiscent of the eighties.
So you're talking about the logo?
I'm, yeah, and I'm looking at, yeah. And the reason I'm looking.
It's only about ten years old.
It's definitely better than three years.
Yeah. I think though, that in the arc of where silt is going, it seems like, you know, having a refresh is a good idea. I was out shopping in town, um, a few days ago. I came to town to pick up the posters and I visited the historical society grounds. Chris, you said that you're a friend, I think.
Was, was anybody there?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, yeah. They were wonderful.
We have a problem with volunteers.
Okay, no, there were two volunteers in there and they gave me a pamphlet and I really spent a lot of time in the schoolhouse. It was very charming. There's a neat wigwam outside. Okay, but.
The problem is not having enough volunteers, not the, not the volunteers themselves is not enough.
Yeah. When I was out shopping, um, somebody suggested to me that the brand looked like Florida. I thought that was an interesting idea that they had. But you tell me, um, what do you think the issue is with the brand right now that you? Would define as your situation with it?
I don't hate it. I think it's, I mean. I don't, I like it and, um. I don't think we want something that's like too modern look. I mean, I think we, I kind of like a sort of a vintage, I don't know. But nothing too clunky. So I kind of like this because it doesn't feel. Too bubbly, but.
I mean, I, I like it. Personally, I wish it had some color to it because it's kind of black and white generic, but you know, the. Other than black and color, I like it.
But I'm not, okay, I mean, I'm open to.
You know, the heron looks really Floridian to me. There's an area called Florida's Nature Coast and it's about an hour off of Gainesville, uh, on the coast. Uh, it's actually on the west coast of Florida and it's just beautiful. Uh, and it's not beachy at all. It's not high end and beachy. Um, it's not like going to Orlando. It's not even like going to a big city like Tampa. It's certainly not like going to a Sarasota, but it's called Old Florida Nature Coast. And you know, and then this is just me being aware of that brand. When I see the heron and when I see the cattails, I do see something. More Floridian than Coloradan. So, you know, that's my.
It's not very mountainous.
When you're on the river and so I spent a lot of time on the river. So that's the view, like when you're on, when you're down here at the silt. Takeout. You're gonna see more of that. So. I think that for me, it was like.
And then what does the mayor call it? A crane? Something like that?
Buzzard?
Buzzard? Sound buzzer? Is it not a crane?
I had an opportunity, so.
So we're talking about changing the brand. Is anybody gonna lose their mind over that idea or?
I have one person that will lose. He really likes the logo.
I think it's straightforward. It's, you know, I don't dislike it. I, I like it. Unless I see something that really speaks to the brand that we are coming in. Uh, but if it's something that. It would, in my mind, take, you know, away, then I would speak up to it.
Whoever designed it really did do a very nice job of balancing it. They really did. Whoever put it together did a very nice job of balancing.
But now do you want to know, like if it speaks to the brand that we created? I think that's the question.
I guess, does that, I mean, the question is, does that logo still represent?
The vision.
The vision, the talent. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
Yeah.
We talked, we talked earlier about wanting the, the branding, not the logo specifically, but the branding more general, to be more aspirational. To be more forward focused. I'm not sure that that logo gets that done. I don't believe it does.
I don't think it communicates the idea of the Western hometown. I think that we could do a better job of that, you know, one of.
I mean, it's better than, I mean, Glenwood has a G with waves on it. I mean, that's, that's what they're thinking.
Well, that's a, that's a very modern attempt at a logo.
Well, that's true.
Is there, is there a new one?
Yeah, I know. I, I like.
Because of the water park and all the water that they have and that kind of fits their.
And this, like, again, situating myself on the river, I think about like silt's kind of a flat spot. So with where you see herons and stuff like that versus like that way, it's a little more, I don't know. So it, it does make sense to me geographically. In a way, you know what I mean? But, um, but it also might not make sense to most people, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, but that, to me, that's why it makes sense because we're kind of in the middle of this apex and then we're sort of in a flat spot in the river and we do have herons. So to me visually, it always sort of made sense. But, but if you don't, if you don't sit on the river a lot, then it may not make any sense.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
That logo has lots of skinny lines too, so it doesn't scale down very well.
You know, the other thing from a design perspective, um, I had a chance to kind of look at that logo. It's where it's not set up properly is it's not art ready. If somebody were to use it, you have to do a lot of, um, changing of the shading in the back. It's just the type of file as well that it is. So in order to.
We have one good one.
Okay. Well, you know what I'm referring to, referring to, yeah. You know, I don't think that it's representative of, you know, the mountains. I think that it's not necessarily representative of, I'd like to, you know, continue doing discovery to see if we can find something that's also representative of the diversity. Forty percent of the population being Hispanic people is really diverse and there's a lot of opportunity for depth of community there. I mean, the fact that people at the town are learning Spanish is super exciting. I mean, it's going to be super exciting, uh, to see the multiculturalism really, um. Grow and expand in the community, I think. I mean, you've got multicultural groceries, food opportunities. Uh, I don't know if you have different types of music at the events and so forth, but maybe something that. Captures the whole of community a, a little bit more and not so weighted to the river. So maybe coming up from sea level, so to speak, and if that makes sense. You know, when I drive into town, I am struck by how rugged it is. It is so jagged and rugged and the skyline up against the, um. Sky, the blue sky and the clouds is, is absolutely stunning. So, you know, there's that choice in terms of, you know, coming off of that in a way from, you know, the river heritage. That also doesn't speak, um. It looks a little old fashioned and it doesn't speak to being on the river in terms of doing rafting. I'm a paddleboarder, but I don't know if it speaks to rafting to me either. So I could think of some cases that I could make, you know, for updating. Also with where the town is right now. Is it insufficient to drive traction forward? Sometimes to drive traction forward, you've got a lot of things coming up. You've got the. Uh, pedestrian plan, which sounds to me like one of the major developments and major investments in the community. Sometimes having a new brand coincide with that development, um, is like a turning, turning the page. Uh, you also had a major development with the water, um, situation, the water company aspect of town. People had their bills increased. So maybe having a new perception about town as some changes like that were made. Is also a harbinger for good things, um, and more sufficient to drive traction forward.
I'd like to see us get away from a monochromatic.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We're talking about diversity and, and culturally. Residentially, we want to welcome tourism. We want to welcome business. We have more events. These things speak to multifaceted. I think color is a great analogy for having a more multifaceted community. It will also look well, look better digitally, speaking as a nerd.
And I'm the one wearing pink.
And I keep looking at, right, Fuchsia. It's great. No, it's good. I might have to have some Fuchsia in the brand, everybody.
And you send some ideas.
Yeah. I'm open to color.
Speaking to the vibrant colors that we have in the hillside and then the river. Let those colors be reflected in the logo instead of it just being black and white.
I have a funny, we're all, we're all going to the same place and your outfit is so good for the idea of, no, because honestly, I mean, not to get into, but no, I think that what Derek is saying is, is great. I mean, think about, think about nature and all the colors and nature that we have and that we just have, um, by virtue of where we live. I mean, I drive home at sunset and it's gorgeous. I mean, you know, the fushas and the blues and the navies and the yellows. So anyway, I think the idea of color is.
Seasons here. That's another thing too.
Right, right.
And there's four letters, silt.
Okay.
So maybe we could.
Sorry, it's like this?
No, no.
Like, like eagle?
Well, they just did the mural unveiling that I went to, appearance C and C, and they have four panels and it's spring, summer, fall, winter. It's very cool. That's what maybe.
Four seasons in the same day, huh?
Yeah, sometimes we have them all the same day. It's.
Okay, let's, if we can, let's move on to, we're kind of moving into the objective for revisiting the brand. Uh, so what we're talking about, these are examples, you know, we can, uh, we can articulate this together, but we're looking at updating the town identity, refreshing the image authentically. And we're looking to set identity parameters to guide future community developments. All of these, um, speak to morale as well. Post pandemic, it's a good time for every community to think a little bit about morale still, even a few years out. I think we're still on the upswing as communities everywhere from, uh, that time to a more positive, uh, future. You know, the other thing I think in objectives that we need to touch on is, uh, and we have touched on this a bit, it's really owning the identity. You know, right now, so a brand is something that you own and you need to attempt to own it. We talked about filling the sponge a little bit in the beginning. But one of the reasons that you want to own your identity is because it'll get picked up online and created into something else. Um, the large language models, the search engines, you could have a Japanese travel writer, you could have, and, and that just means on the other side of the world. You could have somebody somewhere who is a travel writer, who visited silt, loves it and decides to characterize silt. And that's good, but you want that to be more noise around your signal. And so owning that signal and owning the value proposition, owning that design, what you say about silt and putting that content out there. Uh, is important. To have any ownability around a brand online. But let me hear from you. What do you think about some of the other objectives?
You know, one thing I'm just gonna throw out there for an objective, I think was something we got to think about. Forty years ago, the north side of the river. There was forty ranches. Right now, there's over five hundred and forty houses, water users.
Okay.
And a lot of them come into this town. I'll guarantee at Halloween, I can name you off a hundred children that come to this town. You go down to miners' claim. I can tell you a lot of these people, this, the ranching is kind of going away. Right now, there's a chunk north of town here that's. Looking at being sold and put on eighty more homes. I think, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. I think that's something that's, we're getting closed in more than we think. And I think that's something we got to think about as a future too for silt because. They come into this town. But I mean, like I say, forty years ago was forty ranchers. Right now, they're, I think, I think down at the water board, we got five hundred and forty water users from. Uh, not Newcastle, it'd be, uh. Well, be past Miller Lane to. Past Coal Ridge. And then from here to just the other side of Harvey Gap. That doesn't include that side of the river. That's how much rural has, farming is, ranching is gone. It's going away and it's being. Like I say, there's another place right out here that's looking at eighty homes and it's not too far from the edge of town. Them people all come into this town. I'm just saying, like I say, at Halloween, I can name you a hundred children that live just outside of town. And miners' claim, you go under any time and I, I see ranchers or people who live out of town all the time. I'm just throwing it out there. It's something we've got to think about. Down the road because we're getting closed in more and more and more and they're moving this, you know, and, and it's, I see some of these places want the annex into town. Just throwing it out there. And I think that's something we've got to look at, whether it's store, whether you want to stay a bed and bed and breakfast or we want to bring them in. I'm just. You know, it's happening and there's, there's no stopping it.
And that's an important point to consider. And I think that in one of our last conversations, what we touched on is to authentically. Be a brand, you know, you, you want authenticity at the end of the day. You don't want to put a brand together like being a small downtown, great place to live, small hometown. And then have tremendous sprawl right on the other side of that. So I think you're right.
Forty years ago, you looked across the river, there wasn't probably a dozen lights at night. Now there's two, three hundred homes.
Twenty years ago, there wasn't.
I bet there's three hundred homes south of the river too.
Well, I mean, the difficulty, you know, we have a comprehensive plan. And it's all, all that territory on the north side of the river you're talking about. And I think, you know, as we look at redoing our comp plan, we have to look at the north side of the river and the south side of the river. For what's going to happen around us. And how we. Frame out what can and can't happen. I mean, just, just as an example, look at the, you know, the proposed development out on Rue Ranch, which was a solar field, which they've withdrawn the application now. So. Yeah, they, the, the, the final vote was supposed to be today at one o'clock, but they withdrew the application prior to that. So didn't have to go through it. How do you stop it? It's very hard. How do you tell a property owner, a rancher? You can't sell off your property to this developer that's going to put eighty home sites on and you're going to walk away a rich person and be able to retire. You know, you look back, I don't know if you were around the cross side when the golf course and, you know, that was being built, John Elders. I think today it would take off. But years ago, I think it just wasn't, the town wasn't.
Stillwater, yeah.
Stillwater wasn't, we weren't ready for it. It was too much of a change.
And Stillwater is my nightmare.
But I mean, that was, I mean, when it was gone, I mean, John El, there were some big names involved in that, but it just wasn't quite ready for it. I think today, I think it would take off. I, I truly do know. I think it wouldn't happen, but.
Probably not. Yeah, because there was. Two eighteen hole courses, one public, one private. I don't think, yeah.
But anyhow, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, something to think about. That's changing.
Well, and, and, and you know, my fear of Stillwater is that we end up in a situation where parachute is. You have a metropolitan district that's created and they become the haves and the municipalities, the have nots.
Yeah.
And, and so that.
And, and so that, that, I mean, that's a, that's a real risk. How to solve it? I don't have all the answers, but you got to talk about it. And you got to talk about what would bring that people, those, those, that development in and how would it fit with what we're trying to define here? How do you keep it so that that becomes still part of Silt being a hometown?
And I, I'm just throwing it out. I think it's something that we have to keep on the radar for our branding. I mean,
I, I agree. I mean, we have to kind of, you know, we have that Western heritage that we kind of have to.
Growing faster than we think, so. Just throw it out there.
Should our branding be welcoming of that or prohibiting it?
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I just, well, it gets, it gets back to one of those attributes, which is rural or rural by design or something along those lines.
Do you brand in the face of it or do you try to brand around that or, and that's really, I think, a, that's really the question. Are you going to brand despite, despite that situation? Because you want the brand to have longevity, like a picture of the brand in a decade.
Well, and I think, you know, I think.
I still think the term hometown would work, you know.
That's a classic, that's a classic term, isn't it?
Well, and we're getting more crowded, but it's sort of relative to everybody else. We're less crowded than the people up valley, you know, so relative to that, we're still the hometown. I mean, although I do hear what you're saying, like I said, the whole, you know, no, no traffic on I seventy might not be a good selling point. That's not good. We don't know how long that's going to last.
Certainly not a good selling point at five thirty at night.
I mean, years now, there could be a roundabout on the counter. Who knows, you know, with, and everything, all of that being sub, in, in town, who knows?
Back to the attribute on quiet, can we cover that off a little bit? Would you say that it's, we talked a lot about it being a quiet and peaceful community. Can you claim quiet?
Well, when we want to be, but when we want to throw a concert, it's.
We could claim it, but it probably wouldn't work on a, you know, slogan or anything.
We just revisited all our noise ordinances, so.
Oh, okay.
Be quiet is not the optimal word.
Okay.
Peaceful.
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 Tranquil.
Peaceful. Peaceful, tranquil.
How do you want to cover off this point though about the growth that, that's everywhere in Colorado? I mean, it's everywhere. Everything that was, what, you know, ten years ago, twenty years ago? I mean, I've been here for twenty-two years. It's a different Colorado.
If, if the question were asked of a bunch of residents out in the community, is Silt managing its growth? What would the answer?
Hopefully it's a yes.
I think at this point, it's a yes.
Yeah.
So it depends on who you talk to. If it's somebody that's lived in Old Town Silt, that's been here for thirty or forty years, they may say no, because they still think it's getting too big. But if you talk to somebody that moved here ten years ago, they're going to say yes.
I think it would be, yeah, probably like sixty, forty, but the no's would be split between those who've been around for a while and wanted to stay the way it was and those who want more amenities and more features.
Some people would say we're not allowing enough growth and some people would say it's growing too much.
They'd be, the no would be two groups, not enough and too much. Whereas the yeses would be, yeah, it's in balance. I think that's why it's like a sixty, forty split.
And I didn't think about that as far as some people saying it's not growing enough or fast enough.
Yeah.
I think people need amenities.
Having issue with growth, you always think that the, the issue is that's too much. When you ever think about this, you're not being enough.
It's people wanting more restaurants. It's people wanting more grocery store, a bank, more local services. Those are the people who would say, no, we're not managing growth well because they don't have those, those amenities.
Okay. And then one of the things that we said in one of the past discussions was Silt is a lot more like marble in terms of hospitality than it is like a veil. So not tourism centric, more community centric, but visitors welcome, something like that.
Hold on, let me get an invitation.
Well, I said, maybe we could, maybe we should consider their model because it's, it does seem a little more like closed off and then, then they open for events kind of thing. But I don't know. And I, it's, yeah, I mean, we're not like, we're not like Glenwood. We're, that's like, we're not like West Slope's water park town. We're a little more.
That's not a bad thing.
Here's a last question on objectives. What is the, if everybody's okay with where we left the last segment? Talking about growth, that's sort of an open ended question, seems like, you know, brand, brand authentically given the here and now. With regard to how growth may unfold and be intentional about it affecting the way that growth occurs insofar as you can? Is that sort of where you're landing on thinking about that?
Yeah. Like I said, I wouldn't want something that would age poorly, but.
No, we can always change. I mean, and things change. Look at automotive companies. They changed those.
How often do you do a brand?
Not very often. You know, generally, once you have a brand, it's pretty stable, shelf stable. Um, and you might rebrand if there's something really different that you want to say. So it's stable and if there's something really, I'll give, yeah.
Shelf life, a long time.
Shelf life is a long time.
True, yeah, like my high.
It's a durable good, let's say. It's a durable.
You know? Hometown might be a long term.
I know hometown's a classic term. Somebody said the word vintage, which I've actually been thinking about vintage concepts in my mind. So there's something vintage about a hometown. Last question that I had, though, moving on from that is if, okay, if I were to ask, what is the first thing that you would want to brand? You know, what comes to my mind from, you know, listening here the past few weeks would be, I don't know if you like talking about this or not, but you know, your water project, something really different happened and something impactful happened with the water project and that people's bills changed. I would think that'd be a good place to start branding and making some statements about what Silt is doing, how Silt regards the community, Silt's plans for its community. Now, that might not be your answer as to the first thing that you would do with brand, but any other ideas?
I was going to say the summer events.
Summer events?
Just because it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of time in front of people who may not all be from here.
I would, I would just make it, I would, wouldn't say summer.
That's a good point. Yeah.
You know, say.
Lots of eyeballs.
You know, maybe it's, you know, maybe there's a, a, a an ability to say, hey, let's make sure the water plant and everything about the water plant is under the new brand. But where we're going to get the most, you know, that's going to be for everybody that's here, what, what we're going to get the most bang for our buck for people outside of the community is our events.
Yeah.
And that's where like if we, with that Southern Street, the, the pedestrian area down there, doing some of that, that type of brand would be ideal time to launch some of that kind of stuff. Cause that will be where we can do some events downtown in addition to doing the concerts up there. If we, when we redo the park over here and if we were to do some of Veterans Park as far as changing that gazebo into some kind of a smaller band shelter from that for different size events and stuff here.
I would even say you could take the branding to the funding agencies when you're going to discuss funding. The pedestrian overpass and the plaza and stuff like that, that the new branding would hopefully instill a different value proposition in those funding agencies.
It's a great idea. And then I, you know, I would add to that, maybe even sponsorships. I don't know if the town works with sponsorships for the events or for anything else.
Oh, yeah, we do.
But yeah, you could, yeah, absolutely leverage it for sponsorships in line with fundraising.
Come to Silt and see the most expensive pedestrian bridge in the western.
It'd be only the most expensive because it was the last one built.
Yeah, till the next one.
Who gets one built?
They'll build another one.
See, I doubt Newcastle's was cheap because they had to go over the railroad and the river in two separate sections. So, or three sections, actually. They had to go as a river.
The, uh, the railroad.
The river and.
River and the interstate, but they're short spans.
Yeah. Yeah.
Those aren't.
So I mean, do we?
It's not crossing the river.
Do we do like, like press releases or little things on our website about like the water plant, for example, and like what are priorities there are, like all the great work we've done with solar?
You will all get required, you will all be required to get tattoos on your shoulder.
We have a no.
We do need to have a marketing strategy and a marketing.
That'll come.
I hope that'll come because we got to do something with all of this. Yeah.
You know, something to talk about some of these different projects that are forward thinking, like some of the stuff that, you know, the town is doing to make life better for its citizens, I think, you know, deserve some detail, like a spotlight on like a, a blog page or something on our website where we can highlight different things like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think that, you know, so these ideas are very, very good. I think that, you know, water project, maybe not water project, you know, depending on how important that is, but I like the idea of applying the brand to events. I used to be an event sponsorship development director, so I love that idea. Press release, you know, generating some, you know, cool press. You can actually, it'll be newsworthy just to have created a new brand. And so you can, you know, announce that news, announce the events, push out some announcements about the community. We could talk about an ad campaign when we get there, doing a media buy. A really big deal is going to be ownability online. It's going to be indexing everything from Wikipedia listings to anything, you know, that the communications team here can get their hands on to be pushing the brand out so that you're owning your message and you're telling the story that you can tell in the places where you can tell it. And that's not going to be entirely doable, but it's going to be something, you know, to try very hard to get done. And you kind of fill that sponge with the new brand and the new words and the new messaging. In fact, you know, that could be, you know, I don't think that you want to do anything that, you know, isn't a finished product and we're not finished at all with the brand, but you know, even simplifying the website right now because of the way that it's indexed, we've talked a little bit about that.
And we need a new picture on Google Maps. A picture on Google Maps.
That'll be a fun try.
Roads, the sign that says Silt.
So there's a lot that you can't control.
Well, at least.
That you have to try.
At least it doesn't refer to us as the F-bomb garage. Which if you look up on maps, Town Hall is referred to as the F-bomb garage. Don't know why. It is a business in town, but. I say, put the old statue back in the center of Roundabout and that's our new brand. That'll get everybody riled up.
That certainly will get people riled up.
I know, yeah. You know, town of Silt, trying to put a square peg in a round hole.
I want to get some opinions out there.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got a, we've got good input. And so where we go next is the situation that we described in the objective is answered by brand strategy. And so we're going to continue with discovery. We're going to continue with the mapping. We're going to try to get community input now. I think it's really important to hear the community, including the Hispanic community at this point. I need to begin on design, meaning starting artwork, sketchups. That'll be a lot of fun. I also have an art director or an art consultant who is a Mexican-American. I would like to talk to her about maybe engaging her to help me look at the brand. I think everything needs to be looked at from a really important lens for everybody is a sensitivity lens. You know, is this sensitive to your culture? Is there anything that, you know, we're doing that, that isn't? Is there anything that we're doing that is inadvertently insensitive? And so picking up messages like that through people who are well qualified to chip in and to add value is an important next step, but I think that we're going to go to the coffee shop and we're going to work on the mapping.
We'll be spending some time down at the coffee shop for the daily coffee lunches and getting out in the community to try to get some additional feedback.
Like literally at the coffee shop.
Literally at the coffee shop.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe we don't want you there.
Maybe I want to be there.
I'll let you know when we're going to be there.
Okay, thank you. This was good. Good input. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Christa. Thank you. Thanks for having me. See you again. Good to see everybody.
Okay. Uh, the time is seven PM and I will call this meeting to order. Maybe I'll roll call, please.
Mayor Raichel? Pro Tim Hanrahan?
Here.
Trustee Brett Knell?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Inglehart?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, maybe rise for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the true republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so.
All right, be seated. First item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or she'll any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items.
No, sir, I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed in tonight?
Yes.
Okay, you're all right.
Falling down the job. Denny Ray is here first.
All right, if you'd like to come on up to the microphone, state your name and address.
We're all here for the same thing. Okay. My name is Denny Ray. I live at eight twelve Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado, eight one six five two. And I have brought flyers. It's actually a, a short, single page inviting each and every one of you. Personally, I got your names on there and I timed it so I'm less than three minutes. So I'm going to hit a couple of highlights and then I will pass those out. What I'm here about is the corner of Eighth and Home. We've got both sides on this corner that think we really need you guys to come. We need your input. We need to come to some kind of a arrangement that isn't scary. And the way it is, it's scary from a personal point of view, but from more than that, depending on the cutting and where it would happen to widen to the full extreme of East Street in rifle, which is measured the same as what they're talking about. Anyway, point being if tree roots are broken and whatnot, trees fall over, this becomes a potential hazard. And so we need to look at this in a much broader way than can we take every inch? And I'm pushing for, let's support improving sidewalk, yes, but let's not destroy the neighborhood. We don't need a water drain because we've got the trees and the greenery. We never have any kind of, we're opposite of that. But no matter what it is, so there's so many things to think on that. Let me get back to the point because I don't want to. We need, we really need your perspective. You know, um, one thing that Joel and Dean and I find that we are on the same, and we want the best for this town. We're, we love this town. We've got all sorts of support, but when it gets down to the details, I'm thinking small town and making it the niche that everybody wants to come to, because that's what I hear anyway, and I know that's how I feel. We can figure out a way to do a, a three-story parking lot somewhere. It doesn't have to be here. So I'm looking and hoping that you guys will accept this invitation. We can look and see what, what we can recommend for this meeting that's going to be on the twenty-fourth of June and let's see if there's a community we can go, yeah, we can do this and then present it and, and see what happens from the twenty-fourth and let, let Joel proceed on with, with his task, which is to improve Eighth Street. And I think, oh, and I'm happy to host and please, if, if you will, we kind of need to do this this coming week. And the last thing, I want to say to each and every one of you, thank you so much for what you do and for serving here. Just, I have the greatest of respect and I really hope that you'll step up on this and that we'll find a way that'll make us, that everybody's safe and the neighborhood is still Old Town neighborhood. And thank you.
Thank you.
Did I make it?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You have twenty seconds left, if you would like.
Actually timed this. Not, not my front side, we're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in again, Dan.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. No, there's a lot to say, even given what you say at night, because I'm the other half of the same.
Okay. Anybody else signed up?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, Teresa Fozzie.
Okay.
Hi. Um, like Danny said, I would like to have a walkthrough as well. Mainly, I don't know, like, can you guys bring like fluorescent? Spray paint?
Some, some streamers or something. Okay.
Yeah, I just, I still don't understand the access for, I mean, I understand the garage, but not in between our house that is a driveway also. So it's kind of pointless because it's going to be cut out, little tiny piece and then cut out again. So I don't, I just, I don't think we're getting more parking. So yeah, I would. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then we have Sharon Fazey.
I spoke.
You spoke. Oh, okay. All right.
Right.
Gang on the corner, guys. And we want you to come and help us get this resolved in a way that fits for everybody.
Thank you guys for coming in again. Yes, and we'll continue to, to work down this path, literally a path. Yes. Yep.
I've never answered a call opinion question, so let me say about the name I put.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, uh, next up is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting. And the contingent contract award for space needs analysis with world architects and engineers in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars. Anybody would like to discuss any of those separately?
I have a question, I guess, for. Man, in a short, I read through it. I kind of think I have, and just a quick. What is the final goal? What, what is your final goal with the sixth fourth? I mean, what, what is our final objective at the end? There are two, there, there's one real objective. How much space do we need to meet the growing needs of the community? We're out of space now, but what do we need? But the second kind of piece of it is, what could we do with this building? To continue meeting some of that space and is it even possible? And that's what this company, that's what that is for then. That, that, that's what we're doing. How, what do we need now and into the future with the growth and development that we have on the docket? And then is the space that we have now usable into the future? Because right now, I mean, you know, some of the struggles we have with this building mechanically, it's, it's, we've used just about every outlet that we can to plug something in. It's not set up for communications. Um, and we have, uh, accessibility issues. And so the other question, what is their goal as far as timeframe? When, I mean? Uh, we would be done about December. Okay. That's the, that's the timeframe that we put in. And this, I mean, after this is done, you'll have an idea what it is that we need to think about in terms of facilities. And it's not just Town Hall, it's also Public Works. And Town Hall includes the Police Department, Community Development Administration. And Public Works includes, you know, Public Works and the storage of our equipment. That's what we're looking at with this study. This will give you a basis to go, all right, now how are we going to look at this? And first and foremost, where's it going to be located? Second, how much is it going to cost? Which leads to third, how do we come up with dollars to actually do any of this? And then they, they present that to you and you present it to the board or they? They'll, they'll probably be bringing it, much of it directly to the board. Okay.
So this is this facility and the Public Works facility. Okay. And, and if we don't get the grant, you guys.
Well, it, we'll bring it back and you, you see if you want to spend the money to do it without the grant. Okay, that was the other question. Okay.
Should we be trying to get to the results sooner so that it aligns better with budget planning season?
This is a multi-year project.
So it's not going to have any impact on our budget.
This is, yeah, we're not building it next year. No. I mean, we might have some money for more planning next year, but perhaps.
I'm more thinking about budgeting the next phase.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not the whole thing.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know that we would be in a position where we would have a next phase next year.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my concern with all these feasibility studies is we always end up with this big broad, you need somewhere between six and fifty-seven offices. Which in the end is just a whole waste of money because then you're going, later on, you're actually doing a real study to figure out what you needed to narrow it down. So are we going to get real good, detailed numbers out of this so that we're not doing this again or doing anything close to this again?
The goal is that this would be the direction that the operational needs for facilities would come from. And it won't be, ah, you might need six, you might need twenty. And I, part of this discussion will lead into conversations about, and this was one of the reasons when we went through the proposals, why, uh, Wold scored as high as they did was they're going to walk through operationally. Are we operating the way we should be operating? Should we be looking at maybe less real estate? Maybe allowing people to work at home. It's hard as a municipal organization because we have to be here. But is there a way that as we expand, that maybe we don't need to keep adding offices? Maybe we can have some functions that are going to shift and work remotely.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're getting something that's going to work that we get this plan, we can hand it to an architect and say, design a building that meets this criteria, not the architect has to do a study over again to make sure we're.
That is not the design of this.
Okay.
And this price is pretty much setting, I mean, it's not going to, at the end, another, oh, we need this for this, this, I mean, just, I know, I know you. I would, I would love to say that the, the price is set in stone, but I know that projects tend to have scope creep. Okay, I, I'm just asking now.
All right.
Is relative to the final cost changing? Is, is there a percent ceiling that we want to put on it?
No, I would, I would say that any change they, we would have to bring back to you.
One percent? Is, is worthy of, okay.
It would, that would be on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, it's my questions.
All right. Any other questions or someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Inglehart. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, sir.
None for me either. Do we have any agenda changes tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Anything from the board? Except we're going to have an agenda change right now. Since, is Dan Galvin remote?
Dan is remote.
Okay, he's, okay. All right. Easy enough. Uh, then next up is the water plant construction update with Dan Galvin, uh, with Gardening Construction. We'll turn it over.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Dan.
Great. Uh, my apologies for not showing up in person. Uh, a couple of extra things went on. Uh, but Dan Galvin, Gardening Construction to present this month's update, uh, to the salt water treatment plant. Uh, we appreciate everybody making the visit out, uh, last month, put their eyes on it. Uh, maybe now these pictures, um, carry a little more weight. Uh, so health and safety items, um, no safety incidents to date with our crew. I'm happy to report that. Uh, we continue with, uh, good relations with plant staff and visitors wearing proper PPE about the site and controlling, uh, access in and out of the gate. Uh, with activities, uh, progressing through the site, we mostly see small vehicle traffic, uh, through the gate. Uh, as of last week, we did some more road improvements and grading in the area to allow more access, uh, for vehicles, uh, in and out of the property. And then with weather, uh, we're starting to watch for heat awareness and lightning with our crews. Uh, take appropriate measures to make sure guys stay hydrated or bring them in, um, as the lightning strikes. Uh, regarding our construction progress, um, again, last month, we saw the shell, the metal building and, um, CMU up. Now the guys have started with, um, the, continued with interior items. Uh, so some of the pictures show, uh, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing process, progress. Getting drywall up, uh, the painters back doing some industrial coatings in the chemical area. And then our electrician continues with, uh, outlets and door signs in the area. Uh, we've had, the doors have been installed, the overhead doors and the man doors have been installed, windows have been installed. Uh, so we're just about weathered in just one or two, um, HVC penetrations, uh, to put some, uh, duct work through. And that'll wrap up. So we essentially consider the building, uh, weathered in at this time. And then as I said, it's the last, last little bit of site, uh, leveling some of the dirt in the other areas to, to its final elevations and making it easier to, uh, traverse through the site. Uh, regarding schedule, uh, we maintain our CPM, our, uh, schedule. Uh, we're, we're just looking at that September performance testing. We continue with additional subcontractors coming through the site. Uh, as we mentioned, the plumbers, um, the electricians remain, drywall subs, painting subs. And now, um, we have additional process equipment that we've received on site. So the last two big pieces of equipment, um, made it out, uh, the week before last. And with some help from, uh, subcontractors, we got those in the buildings on their pad. And so now the guys are working at, uh, connecting the pipe between the equipment. And then a few other, uh, ancillary items out in the field, uh, some of the sewer, uh, connections. And like we said, there's a little bit of the grading. Uh, regarding the budget, we continue with, uh, contingency log updates and looking at, um, some pump replacements, uh, that the town is, that the plant operators are mulling over with, uh, Tony San Canella. And, uh, preparing some pricing for those items. And then billing to date, uh, sixteen point seven million built to date, and that represents about sixty-eight percent, uh, construction cost. Again, the majority of that being the equipment and the work completed to date. With that, glad to open it up to questions.
I don't have anything tonight.
Are, are we still on track to be producing water? Uh, soft start in October. Probably fully over, switched over in November?
Yes. Yeah, I think we're anticipating being fully switched over in that October, uh, timeframe.
Okay. I'm not sure we're going to, we're going to be able to beat the completion of the bail pass, uh, rest area, but we're doing our best.
Yeah, they got a little weather, uh, the other day. So yeah, maybe it'll help us out.
It's going to be close.
They started before we did those, so they had had.
They started it, almost, I think, over a year before we started.
Yeah.
Okay. Now it's looking good and we're getting close.
Yes.
Sooner than we know it, we'll be pumping some good water through there. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you next month.
All right, next up is the Third Amendment, uh, to Mountain Waste and Recycling, Inc. for Waste Removal and Recycling Services Agreement. Man for man.
After a very arduous negotiation, uh, we were able to come to terms. Um, and when I say it was arduous, it was, um, uh, our friends at Mountain Waste sending us a proposal to hold the, uh, uh, two thousand twenty-five contract rate the same for two thousand twenty-six and then have the exact same terms of the contract for twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Um, and we felt that that was a very reasonable and, uh, contract extension. And we are quite happy to have the ability to continue working with Mountain Waste. And Doug Goldsmith is here this evening. I don't know if you have any questions of him, um, but, uh, we've had just, uh, tremendous working relationship with Mountain Waste. When we do have problems and there are very few, um, we get them corrected quickly and they work with us and we work with them. Um, and you know, sometimes they're great marriage counselors. For the men who forget to take the garbage out.
Garbage, yeah. Uh, as far as the contract goes, I don't, don't have anything, but since you are here, um, you want to step up? Yeah, just, uh.
Doug Goldsmith, Sales Manager, Mountain Waste?
Yeah. Um, the last two pickup days in my neighborhood, they've had issues with recycling, killing, being dumped on the streets. So, uh, it just happens to be the, uh, we've been a hundred percent, never had an issue until the last two weeks. So.
Higher priority and egg on the faces you could possibly, nobody likes that ever.
Yeah.
Nobody likes it right now. Um, but the, the, you know, A, let's make sure it doesn't happen again. And B, how quickly do we clean it up?
Yeah. Yeah, you guys were right out there. I called on a Saturday because it was a holiday week and you guys were out there Saturday to get it taken care of. So the service was great. I was surprised I got a call back on, on Saturday. I just happened to, my neighbors came over and knocked on my door and they're like, what's going on? I'm like, I'll make a quick call and they took care of it. So.
Um, anybody who tells you it's going to run a hundred percent certain every time, every week for a year, not telling you the truth.
Right.
Um, we're going to do our best to make sure nothing happens. Um, but darn sure, if something happens, we're going to there fix it.
Yeah. But the relationship has been great. I don't even know how far back we go that we started.
This is the Third Amendment, so that would be, it's at least six years.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been with the company eight years, so it's been at least nine.
Yeah, so it's been like nine or ten.
Yeah, we had a different contract, I think, previously before we went into the new one. So I think, yeah, I think we're going to nine, ten years. So, uh, but service has been great. Appreciate everything you guys doing and working with us on town events, stuff like that. So, uh, you know, I'm pretty happy with the rate. So, so yeah, look forward to working with you guys again.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming in.
Sure. Someone like to make a motion? Or any more questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Third Amendment to the Mountain Waste and Recycling, Inc. for Waste Removal and Recycling Services Agreement.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Hanrahan approved the Third Amendment, uh, to Mountain Waste and Recycling, Inc. for Waste Removal and Recycling Service Agreement. Uh, seconded by trustee Poston, because that's who I heard first. Um, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I just have a comment to be able to keep pricing in the talks of, you know, high inflation and rising costs in so many areas. I just want to say I truly appreciate on behalf of the population of Silk, being able to, you know, being a company that sees that and, um, it, it's fair. Um, so just want to say thank you. Appreciate that a lot.
Lasting times right now, trying to grow this out.
And we see that. Thank you.
Uh, next item is manager and staff reports.
Couple of things I'll just emphasize. Um, we did get contacted by a recruiter that is, as long as I sign the contract, which is a contingent contract. Um, if they find somebody and we actually hire them, we pay them, we don't pay them, uh, beyond that. To try to entice a building inspector. Um, we continue to not be successful in adding some help to our community development department and we've been the definition of insanity by trying to do the same thing over and over. And it's just not result, role, resulted in anything different. So if it's, uh, acceptable, we'll go ahead and see if this recruiter can go find somebody for us that would be interested in being our building inspector or code enforcement officer.
I only request there would be, could we do like an eighty, twenty or a ninety, ten split with the contractor so that the person, after the person sticks around six months, then they get the balance?
There is specific contract language in there.
Having, having worked with a lot of.
Yes.
Hiring contractors for hiring roles. I've, I've learned through people leaving too soon that we shouldn't have paid them all the money on day one. We paid on day ninety-one.
I will, I will, uh, uh, make that request and make sure that there's something in there related to that.
Really?
Um, the second, the second piece that I wanted to emphasize is that we did get notified by CEBT, our health insurance provider. Our health insurance provider that we're facing another ten to sixteen percent increase this year. Last year, the board chose to keep uh health insurance as it was. And eliminate one other benefit town had uh as somewhat of a mitigation cost impact. There's no decision making tonight, but it's something I wanted to reiterate simply that as we roll into budget season. We need to think about how this is all gonna fit together and what the budget is going to look like. This is about a ninety thousand dollar hit on our budget. Um, and when you consider uh what our sales tax revenues are probably going up, this eats up a good portion of that. Um, so it's a, it's a painful reminder of the costs of uh our, our employees and our benefits. They're our most valuable asset and yet the costs are, are burdensome.
Can I make a request relating to that?
You may.
So in my day job, um, starting this year, all of the employees. Uh, are now going through the ACA and then the company is just reimbursing the employees for that amount. It functions as an offset, but our, not the same private insurance company. It was just continuing to go up way, way, way too much and it was, it reflected a real risk to the organization. So the leadership made a decision to pivot into that offset model. I'm not sure it's applicable to the town, but it might be something we wanna look into in advance of budget.
And if, and if you would like us to look at options, we certainly can. Um, and what those options might look like, it wouldn't, I mean, the, the, the ACA is kind of difficult. To gauge what the cost would actually be, uh, but I can tell you the average policy is likely higher than what we pay. Uh, through the insurance provider, but if we keep getting ten or fifteen percent increases, that may balance out and shift at some point. Health insurance providers out there that we could explore.
I think it's at least looking at to get a comparison.
Yeah, and, and again, having been through that, the end of last year, beginning of this year, we went to, I think, three or four different companies in addition to the ACA.
In talking in health insurance and searching for different providers, so many different things you can look at it. Even if it is a higher deductible that the town would contribute when, you know, towards the deductible. But then that wouldn't be a monthly amount over a length of time. So just different things that different health insurers can provide.
Just to add to that, Andre, you can also use your HSA for some aspects of the deductible. I don't wanna get into the nuance of it, but it would be worthy of having some research to help us make the best decision for the staff.
We'll, we'll, we'll delve into it a little bit more so that uh when the time comes, you can make well-informed decisions.
Thank you.
Uh, the last thing that I will uh uh bring up tonight is we had some discussion about the. Uh, planning and zoning uh applications that we're currently looking for. Because we have to reappoint four members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and a conversation came up about our, kind of our digital meeting policy and remote attendance at meetings. Is that something that the board would like to revisit? You had a policy that was adopted uh in two thousand twenty-two that basically opened the door. Policy really talks about, for the Board of Trustees, doesn't really talk about planning and zoning. I guess the, the question is, is that something that you'd like to revisit?
I would.
I would, because that was something we were kind of forced into during COVID.
Okay.
We, well, it was essential during that time, but I think.
That would, would have been after.
Well, the, the twenty-two policy was in re, in response to a policy that was adopted, I think in two thousand twenty or. So we'll, we'll put it on a future agenda and we'll bring it up, back up for discussion to see whether you wanna make some tweaks to it.
Are we having shortage in applicants to it since we have?
No, it's, I, I think, I think one of the difficulties that we have, especially with planning and zoning. Is that when you're not in the room, you're not necessarily fully engaged with what the.
Yes, I'm, I'm all in favor of people being here.
And, and, and I think even when, you know, if somebody's remote and the Board of Trustees, you. I don't think, it's been a long time since one of you attended remotely. Um, on occasion, staff does. Like tonight.
Okay, don't make it happen.
It's, it's nice to have the option for like vendors or somebody to come in and not have to travel four hours for a twenty minute presentation.
Well, uh.
But it's not for us in the room, I think it's important.
We'll get it on a future agenda uh so that we can have a discussion. And you can review the policy.
I think, rather, can we also add to that the topic of discussion of how many meetings are missed?
Yes.
I think sort of looking at participation holistically versus in person versus virtual. I think we should revisit that and, and it should be applicable to the Board of Trustees as well, not, not that we have any emergent issues with it. But I like the idea of consistency.
Okay, all right, we'll bring the policy back. And that's all I wanted to, I'm sorry, I took up way too much time and I'm gonna get air full tomorrow morning.
See, that music hasn't started yet, so you're good.
Is there over/unders on how long this is gonna take?
Big Mary, I don't know if they take bets now.
Jim, do you wanna talk about the budget strategic planning possibly being a retreat session? I had that highlighted just because it seemed worthy of discussion.
Well, yeah, that, uh, I mean, it, it's entirely up to the board whether you would like to spend a more significant amount of time. Uh, on a single day hashing through a number of items.
I don't know if we need to, but that's just me.
Yeah, I think we didn't. I think we did go against last year.
Evenings for me, work.
I'd like to do it, I'm sorry, please continue.
Didn't you have June twenty-third as the?
That's kind of the first discussion kind of I had originally set up. That on June twenty-third, we would do some strategic planning around the budget as we start to draft the administrative budget. Um, it doesn't mean that that would have to be the date or it, but it, uh, the question was. Would the board want to take a more? Deep dive into certain aspects of the budget where the town's going, et cetera, and do some strategic planning. Before we get into the heavy lifting of the budget. And if that's something that you would like to do, we have to find a date and a time and figure out how it's gonna work. Whether you want an outside facilitator, you wanna just listen to me drone on for a number of hours, you know, it's, yeah. I know many municipalities sit down and have a days-long or two-day strategic pla, planning session. Um, and then I wanted to ask the question whether it was something that the board was interested in.
At the CML meeting we were at before the official stuff started, I was talking with other elected. And officials and town managers of other towns and most of them were having one in the next sixty days. It was just a topic of discussion, oh yeah, we gotta do that work session for strategic planning. I think in one town's case, I don't remember which, it was two or three days long and they'd spread it out over two weeks. Um, I would like to have a session dedicated to it because it's challenging for me to do an hour, an hour and a half of that. And then go into a full night's Board of Trustees meeting and then possibly have an executive session on top of that. It makes it hard for me to focus on the strategic planning specifically when it's part of four additional hours of meeting. That's nobody's fault, but it's happening more often than not nowadays. So I would like to have a separate dedicated session to it, so I better understand the consequences of the decisions.
So would you recommend having that session like on a Monday that's not a normal meeting day, meeting Monday?
I, I think generally that would work as a, on a.
Then we could start.
Sunday evening, at least it's consistent schedule.
Start at like a six o'clock and then run till like nine, do like a three hour or so. And then that would be, or you talk about, would you wanna start other than that and do a little bit longer?
I, I'll defer to the group.
I'm good Mondays. In general, I have open for just this. I mean, it's more of my, my normal, my natural day off from work, so I can do this. And uh, so I would do either, but maybe doing it on a night that's not a normal meeting night, at least one, an early session just to get some really nuts and bolts. And as you're saying, we can focus on just that and we're not in the back of our mind going, oh yeah, and we still have to talk about this, this and this this evening.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with an evening thing, I just, I don't feel we need a full day.
Yeah, I'm not.
No, I can't, I'm, I'm doing a lot. We are going to the conference uh in the end of June. And then there's a leadership, um, gosh, that.
The Hurst Leaders Forum?
Yes, uh, that I'm participating and that's a full commitment of six weeks, two full days. And four full afternoons from one to four.
That's a lot.
Um, towards what the town is doing, you can speak more to it.
They've switched it up a little bit.
Yeah, they moved it up earlier in the year too, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be a full commit, daytime commitment.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Andre.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
So evenings, yes, we can do about four hours. I, I don't think I could take more daytime off.
From a timing perspective, if you wanted to schedule it, the, the next. Probably realistic dates that you could do it would be July twenty-first or August fourth.
July twenty-first, I'm here July fourth, I'm in Brazil.
August fourth?
My birthday.
August fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm here July twenty-first.
July twenty-first would be good because then we've got the twenty-eighth is our first capital plan, so be a good one. I, I'd like to do it before then.
Twenty-first, yeah, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
All right, we'll get to work on pulling it all together.
Thank you.
Do you want an outside facilitator? In the past, you did work with Dana Lavick from DOLA. He's done some strategic planning or I, I'm happy to just.
I don't think we need anybody.
You can do, you're the one that's gonna be doing it, I just have you.
I think you're.
That way you don't have to go to him and him to you, just you do it and be done with it. So July twenty-first, six P M to nine P M?
Yep.
Hard stop at nine?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll get that on the calendar.
And you weren't questions, comments about managers or staff reports?
Um, the Coal Ridge thing, what was, are there any more details?
Uh, it's just an, an early um effort that somebody is looking at putting a group together. That will start really making a concerted effort to plan for a trail out to Coal Ridge. Whether it's on Highway six or a different route, but just a, a means of getting non-motorized. Access to Coal Ridge, whether it be walking or biking.
Got a subcommittee.
And I, is anybody interested? Because there will come a time when somebody from the board is gonna have to jump in on that.
I would be interested in that one.
Okay.
If nobody else.
Mayor Pro Tem, has there been any more conversations about the fall CML dinner? Is that something that?
I'm waiting for a date.
That, dude, we wanna.
That was nice enough to inform Jim.
Yeah, thanks. Actually, uh, if, if CML does what I have requested. It'll be the night before the Farm to Table Dinner and it would be out at the Silk River Preserve. Um, the Farm Tape to Table Dinner is planned for September nineteenth, I believe it is, which is a Friday night. Um, we will have uh, you know, a tent for the event set up. And we would just request that it gets set up a day early and then we would be able to have.
Move into the price of work at one.
Pretty much, and, and it would be a, a great opportunity to showcase the town. Um, hopefully, you know, at that time of the year, the weather is still remarkably nice.
And that for the record is why I signed this up. Again, having the conversations before the official proceedings of the CML meeting, a lot of the questions are what's going on in Silt, what's Silt like? And this is from Grand Junction, this is from Fruta, this is from Palisade. There was also limited participation from Rowing Fork Valley uh municipalities. The, the mayor of Aspen rolled in, which was fascinating, but I think it's a way to get more participation from the communities to the east. And more exposure for Silt to the communities to the west. I wasn't just trying to throw Jim under the bus, that's just a happy side effect.
Thank you.
Someone just, someone just at our table, uh, volunteered, volunteered us, pretty much. They said Silt would like to post the next one and he looked at me, I looked at him and I'm like.
It was, um, the DOLA guy was sitting right there, he was part of it.
Dana?
You know?
Dana.
Falling cold to do a lot of stuff that night, so just add that to the list. Who wants to speak? Andrea joined me, thank you. In return though, Jim, I will nominate myself to participate in the task or two for the Farm to Table Dinner.
Okay.
Sign me up.
Uh, and I, uh, just one thing back to the strategic planning, I assume you would like your department head crew here.
Yes.
Yes, it's important, yeah.
Okay.
Not digitally.
Not digitally. Okay. All right, now I'm really.
And I see his name up there, yeah, uh-huh, or all their names up there.
Okay, all right. Uh, if there's nothing else from manager and staff, then updates from the board and board comments, start with Trustee Poston.
Um, no comment today, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Thank you, so, um, we were at the, I attended the skate competition on Saturday. And the issue of. Being able to connect to the internet, to run your square or some, something like that came up. And there's been all this talk about cell service, but we have town wifi. So that's what they needed anyway, so we ended up giving them the password. And they signed on to the town wifi, I think, and were able to use it, but so.
It kind of works up there, it's kind of intermittent up there.
I, town wifi to me is a way more viable option for people to use.
Did we give them the guest wifi or did we give them access?
I, I think I just gave them guest wifi.
Okay.
But I mean, like, the idea of wifi is something that we could make accessible to people and merchants throughout the town. And we were not beholden to the cell phone tower people, so that's something that I just wanted to bring up, you know.
Perhaps that's an item for our strategic planning session. Because I, I have looked at what it would cost for the town to build a monopole and rent it to cell providers.
But I'm talking about wireless internet that we already have, that if we just bolstered it, then people could use that. We don't need cell service to, to run the card and run a farmer's market, we could do that on wifi alone, I believe. And that, to me, that just might be a better use of our resources.
Or when we have more vendors for our upcoming concert series.
Right.
Work on that.
Just a thought, and then um our discussion with, um, I think it was May twelfth. When the county commissioners were here, we were talking about transportation and then, and so as a result of that, I did reach out. Um, and say I think we need some kind of, we need more data about what we need as a town for transportation. Because I don't know that we actually know really with specificity what the data is there. Um, and then I also attended a Garfield, a, a G C E meeting. Right after our last board meeting, so it's been a little while, but that was, uh, they gave a really good presentation, which was also about being data-driven. And how to use energy the most efficiently and things like that. Um, so that was really interesting, but I, those are all my updates, thank you.
Right, Trustee Britton?
Uh, a couple of things, uh, we had the uh River Center First Annual Golf Tournament that they had over there in Newcastle, we participated in. Um, it was myself, Sergeant Hickson, and obviously there's Martin in Portwood. Um, for what we lacked, what, what they lacked in experience, we made up for in enthusiasm. We did finish under par for the day on eighteen holes with. Three golfers that don't golf, that had never golfed almost and one that doesn't golf a lot, so, or as much as I'd like to at least. But I, it was a great day, a lot of fun and it was a really, really great event. Um, they're talking about making an annual over there, um, River Center's a great, great thing anyway, so it's, was a good thing, a lot of fun. Um, and then, um, I was at the uh Garfield County Weed Commission meeting today. Um, I did have one of the property landowners that's on the, that lives up on Silk Mesa, she's been mentioned specifically. She's been mentioned specifically, the corner of First and Harness, which is in the town, I believe. I'm not sure who, if that's owned by someone or where it is, but there's Naffweed that's getting way out of control, she said she sees there. Um I have a gentleman named Brett McLenn who's on the commission as well. He has some biocontrols, basically some lar- some insects that he harvests off Naffweed days on his property that we can bring that it doesn't eradicate, doesn't get rid of what's there, but it keeps it from growing, getting worse. Um so that's something I can get with Joe on as far as getting him that is information. And then they just asked questions, if we, somebody asked question, if we spray anything out of the river preserve in some different areas, what we try to do out, defer some weed management. I didn't have a lot of information, unfortunately.
I think we keep the noxious weeds down.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what the biggest thing. And they'd ask just if we had a code and we do have a code about weeds, kind of falls under our trash and everything else. Um that, so there is these things in place that if someone has a property that's near yours that you're worried about their neighbor's weeds impacting you, you can reach out to the town and we'll do what we can to help get that facilitated, get them removed.
All right, trustee Clausen.
Um I don't have much tonight, other than I noticed that Treasurer Tucker wrote, congratulations to Jim Mann for his first year of the town of Silt. And it's been a year already. Holy cow.
Seems like yesterday.
It seems like three years. We've gotten so much done.
So many budget meeting. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Sorry, all right, trustee Seifer.
Uh not much, uh just to let you know, we were talking tonight, when you were talking about the people, I'm one of the know people. When we're talking about, you were right, you know, the older, the longer we've been here, it's just, I'm just one of the know people of what we talked about, so. It's what it is. It's all I got.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Uh first, let's set the record straight, Justin, you golfed today. Can't say you don't golf enough and you golf the same day. Come on.
You don't go, if I don't go at least once a week, that's not enough to get better.
It's a relative measure. Uh on a slightly more serious note, big thanks to Joe Lundin and the team for putting together the skateboarding event and for working with uh, was it Jono?
Yes.
And that group to put it on, the Havik Skateboard Comp, it was a great event, decent turnout. They're talking about potentially having a second one, uh trying to get another one this summer. And I suggested the idea of maybe doing it during Haydays, because there's already gonna be a lot of people here. If their parents come to watch them, maybe they come to some fair events and visit with our vendors as well, so I thought it could be a win-win. And we're already gonna have the town resources available. So that seemed like a plausible idea and Joe said he'd bring it up with Jono.
We have to bring it up, just, I'm just, just speaking from, as a member of that committee, it can get kind of territorial, so make sure that they would reach out to the Haydays Committee.
I'm sure Joe, I'm sure Joe will do that.
That, that's what I, I just wanna make sure that gets, gets some, some people get a little twisted.
Yes, territorial.
Yes.
Uh the other thing I wanted to mention is thank you, Jim, for getting the A G N C to introduce a one-hour roundtable session for elected officials. The first one is, is this week? Is it Thursday? Or is it next week?
Thought it was next week.
Maybe next week, I apologize. But it's, it's a one-hour limited sort of A G N C overview that we've been asking for forever. Um and Jim, obviously, your, your participation got them to get it done, so thanks. And I'm definitely gonna be attending and we'll try to make it to all of them that I can going forward. I know that matters to the county commissioners as well that Silt be at least digitally in the room for some portion of it.
June twenty-five.
Two weeks. And that's all I have.
And I have nothing this evening. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by trustee Seifer to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Britton. All is in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Changing the look.